I'd like to call the order. The town council meeting for January 3, 2023. It's 7:00 PM. We are in the Harvey hearing room. Roll call, please.
Council Honan.
Here.
Council Fusillo.
Here.
Council Munson. Council Belcher.
Here.
Council DeMarco.
Here.
Council Flotkat. Council Ayello.
Here.
Vice President Ruggiero.
Here.
President Wittery.
Here. Please rise for the pledge led by Vice President Ruggiero.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with clarity and justice for all.
I'd like everybody to please remain standing. I'd like to have a moment of silence for Chief Michael McManus, who joined the Winter Police Department as a reserve officer in October of 1966 and became a permanent full-time officer in February 1968. Became a sergeant in June of 1983 and served in that position until subsequent promotion to lieutenant in March of 1988. Mike McManus served as an acting chief twice, from January 95 to July 95, and then from July 99 to March 2000 before becoming permanent chief of police on December 26, 2000. Chief McManus was a gentleman to many new recruits as they came on the job as new reserves or officers. He served honorably for 38 years, protecting and educating the citizens of the town of Winthrop. And for that, we thank him and his family for their support and sacrifices. Chief McManus is survived by his wife Fran, his children Maureen, Debbie, Michael, Paula, Thomas, Sherry, Joseph, and Kim, and 15 grandchildren. Minutes have been circulated from December 20, 2022. We have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor DeMarco, second by Councilor Belcher. Any discussions on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those know, the ayes have it. Thank you.
One abstention.
Yeah. Seven to one, one abstention. Public hearings. We have a few public hearings tonight. First, we will open a public hearing to vote to appropriate $989,542 certified free cash as listed. And I will ask Councilor Fusillo to open up the hearing.
Yep, absolutely. So the motion reads, I move that the town council vote to appropriate certified free cash as listed below or take any other action thereto. A lot of these balances are as our policies tell us to put these towards our certain funds. So for generalization, general stabilization, we're allocating $465,294,000. For general stabilization, now the ending balance would be $3,25,678. For capital stabilization, we're adding $348,970 from free cash, where the ending balance would be $3,243,611. And building stabilization, we're adding $175,278 for an ending balance of $300,000. All of these are per our financial rules that we have. That's all I have to add.
All right. So the policies we've enacted as a council over many years ago, and we've actually updated them a little this past year, sets aside 40% of free cash to general stabilization, 30% to capital stabilization, and up to 15% to building stabilization. And we cap that at $300,000. This policy last year was moved up to those standards. And we do set aside a quarter of a million dollars before these percentages take place. So if this motion passed later in old business, this would be moving $989,542 into the stabilization funds. And we're very proud that over the past several years, we've been able to generate balances, which they're never going to be sufficient in what we would want, but they have served us well. We're roughly a little under 10% of our budget in reserve, which is kind of, I don't want to say the gold standard, but it's a very good standard to try to attain. It has helped us in many years, especially with the funding of the new middle high school. Our policies have put us in a position to save several million dollars over the course of the borrowings for that facility. And I thank the council for maintaining the policies that have been set forward in the past. Are there any comments on this? Would anyone like to speak in favor or against this? Anyone from the public? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and we will go back to that in old business. We will open a second public hearing to vote to transfer $24,232.64 from salary reserve and appropriate $30,567.36 for a total of $54,800. Councilor Fusillo.
Yes, so this was something that was taken up at the last finance committee meeting, well, last town council meeting and then finance committee meeting. It was passed through the finance committee meeting, passed through the town council. This has been a long time coming, seeing that a lot of, you know, heavy majority of other communities have a higher quota than we do. So I thought it was the appropriate timing. And that's why it was given a positive recommendation from the finance committee.
And we did discuss this in length at our last meeting. And we have been very conservative in our approach to this, to raising this. And we did, as Council Fusillo said, really feel that it's the proper time now. This is money that's needed for our retirees. Although it's a small amount, it's definitely helpful. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this, in favor or in opposition?
Just a technical question.
Yes, Councilor. Yes, Ayello.
So if I look at the document that the town manager had provided, it had a free cash balance of $123,692. So does the $30,567 come from that number? And therefore reducing that? Or is, just trying to make sure I understand how the numbers are, get connected.
Let me just take a look.
Yeah, it's coming from free cash.
It'll come from that 400,000 that's going to free cash less the transfer.
Correct.
Okay. Great, that's right.
And the rest of it is from the salary reserve line.
Yep. All right, thank you. You're welcome.
Yeah, so the balance, if this was passed, would be $391,924.64. Correct. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will close that public hearing. We will come back to that in old business. All right, continued public hearing on the ordinance review committee recommendations. So we could again handle this as we choose. We will open and we will go back. We went through the first eight items, I believe, two meetings ago. Again, the process is, we want to have fluid discussions with this until the council feels ready to vote. I am open to whatever the council chooses to do on that. We can pick up where we left off and start at number nine, if so chosen by the council. Does that feel like everybody's in favor of that? We were still looking for a few answers on a couple of the previous ones. One was to ask someone from the state on question seven and to see if we have the ability, let's go back to number seven, on fill in the vacancies, if we have the ability to. I think the recommendation was to let the various committees pick their own replacements, which honestly seems like the right thing to do. But we just did have questions to make sure that there wasn't no statutory requirements that required the highest board of the town. I think that was the thought when brought in, that the town council was selected by the town. Therefore, this was the town's voice in these appointments. And we wanted to make sure we weren't doing anything incorrectly by allowing this to go through. So we're still waiting for some clarification on that, I presume. And all right, so on question eight, we finish. And now we're on to question nine. Question nine, which way were we going on this? So the comment is, the charter currently requires the budget to be voted within 45 days following the date of the proposed budget was received by the town council. This led to delays in formal budget presentations as to not to start the 45-day time period. The proposed change would require approval of 15 days prior to the start of the fiscal year, regardless of when the budget was received, to allow the town council to receive the budget earlier, allowing more time to familiarize themselves. So this is something that I had brought up while attending those meetings, where in the past, you know, we couldn't formally receive the budget until March 1st? May 1st? April 1st, because of the 45 days, which would require us to vote June 15th or thereabouts prior to. So this would enable, you know, we would have the budget technically ready and adopted already, which is for submission by the town manager, but technically, we couldn't officially receive it. So it just makes no sense to me. So if we just had the requirement on the other end that we had a vote on it within 15 days prior, then we could receive it in February or March. And it will give us more time to take a look at it. It will give the public more time to be familiar with it. So to me, this seems like, I mean, I'm definitely in favor of this, but I will go around and ask anyone's opinions on this. We'll start with Council Honan.
Thank you, Mr. President. No, that makes sense to me. I think more time for the finance commission to review the budget would only be a good thing. And so I'm for this, and I think it's a great idea.
Council Fusillo.
As Council Honan said, being on the review commission, well, the finance commission, I think it's always better to have more time.
Council Belcher.
I agree as well. I was just curious if there was a reason it was written this way originally?
No, I think we were just looking, I think when it was written, it was, a lot of the stuff that was written back then, there were only seven cities, seven cities, towns with this form of government. And a lot of it was cut and paste. And I think over the years, it's come to us as, you know, we've officially had the presentation, but it just makes no sense. It's been more because of the writings. There's no legal requirements for it, as long as we're voting before the 15 days prior to the calendar year, to the fiscal year. Councilor DeMarco.
Complete agreement with my other.
Ayello.
I agree.
Council Vice President Ruggiero.
I agree. This came out of a subcommittee unanimously as well. But just, you know, I think this also solves a problem where in the past, we've had a budget, but where it hasn't been formally delivered.
Had a working budget.
Right, exactly. It's always been this kind of like gray area of all, you know, do we have it? Do we not have it? Some people have it, some people don't have it. So I think this kind of just eliminates that whole process, makes it a bit clearer.
All right, so that's a good one. Recommendation number 10. The requirements of the capital improvement plan as required by the charter have not historically been followed. The ORC's recommendation changes the timeline that the capital improvement plan is required to be presented to the town council, which change will be better aligned with the current process and will allow for a more formalized capital improvement plan to be presented. In short, the change will allow the town manager to know the availability of funding for capital improvements. And I'll start this end, and I apologize to start here with the council vice president, since you're also coming out of the subcommittee also.
No, and that's fine. This one did come out of the subcommittee, I believe unanimously. But, you know, there's definitely some stuff to think about here. You know, the rationale was because the charter hadn't been followed in the past. And that's not a knock on anyone who's sat here or there or elsewhere. But it's trying to, I think, make that process a little bit easier. But I think, you know, maybe we have to ask ourselves, like, why hasn't that been followed in the past? And, you know, what's the problem and how are we solving it? That's sort of a theme that's come up throughout all of these deliberations. So I think this is one way to solve a problem. I think another way to maybe solve is to just kind of hold the administration accountable and get it to us when we want it. And so, you know, you can kind of go about this one of two ways. But, you know, this is sort of what the ORC came up with. And it's, you know, it's worthy of, I think, discussion, so.
Council Ayello.
Yes. Thank you. Yeah, actually pivoting off of what the vice president said, would rather take a different tack, which is just because we haven't done it doesn't mean we should never do it. When I looked at the charter and the process outlined in the charter, it's actually quite rational, both in terms of the substance as well as the timing of it. You know, for an organization like ours, where everybody is essentially a volunteer, the operating budget and the capital budget take an extraordinary amount of, require an extraordinary amount of attention to detail. If we could have them sequentially as opposed to all piled on top, I think it would give us a greater ability to be able to dive into the development of a solid five-year capital plan, which the town has never developed, and to be able to get more input as to priorities for capital investment and looking at ways of plugging various gaps and looking at different financial twos available to us. So I would argue we should not proceed the way that the ordinance review committee set forth and just stick with the town charter. Let's try it for a couple of years. And if, for whatever reason you or I have turns out to be wrong, I'm happy to reconsider. But I think the logic and the requirements baked into the original White Town Charter are consistent with all the public capital planning I've done throughout my life. I'd like to see them unchanged.
Council DeMarco.
I'm going to agree with Vice President Ruggiero on this one. I was on that subcommittee as well and it came out with a positive recommendation.
And again, the recommendation is, should charter section 711 be amended, changing the timeframe for which the town manager must submit a capital improvement program to the town council from 120 days before the start of each fiscal year to with the budget for the upcoming year? And it was 9-0 in favor of the recommendation. Councilor Belcher.
I see it both ways. I think Council Ruggiero and Council Ayello both have very valid points. But I think getting them together, for me personally, would be easier to kind of put the numbers with the ideas. But I don't have a background in capital planning, so I'm kind of undecided on this one.
May I say a quote?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I will get to you. Council Munson.
Good day, Mr. President. I just wanted to ask if there was a specific amount of time necessary to develop that capital improvement plan that would make it work in terms of what Council Ayello was saying? What would he propose in terms of timing, just out of curiosity? It does seem like it would make more sense to have it sequential. But at the same time, if it's not a huge amount of time needed to come up with a capital improvement plan, then doing it simultaneously might not be as overwhelming as it sounds.
Yes, you have to, Council Ayello.
And I think we actually have a schedule. The town manager has a schedule that is going to produce the capital plan consistent with the current requirements. So for the first time, we'll see that happen. He's holding a series of meetings with his staff. That's going to allow all this information to come to us in the time prescribed for it. And then it gives us a good 30 days to just look at the capital plan without the operating plan. The two really very different beasts that are tangentially related. And once you're done with the capital plan, we roll right into the operating plan. And I think it just makes the processing of those two things much better. I would say this to Tony and to his benefit. He's going to go through a lot of work this year. And he's going to finally have it structured, both process-wise as well as substantively the right way. Every year should be a lot easier once he has this stuff. He's got the asset management program sort of getting up and running. They won't be full up this year, but they'll be full up next year. But there's no reason why, just given the fact that Tony's got a schedule this year, that we can't meet that schedule on a regular basis as per the town charter.
Council Fusillo.
You know, there's a lot of good points being brought up. I do agree with the ORC's recommendation and Council Ruggiero's recommendation. I think, you know, there's a lot of good points being made there.
Council Honan.
I see both sides. I see, Council Ayello, what you're saying there, giving him, following the charter as is versus the handing it over with the budget. I think it's most important to just do what we say and say what we do, whichever way we go. So I'm not really partial to either one. I'm glad to have both of your opinions. But yeah, just important to do what we say and say what we do.
Vice President.
To clarify, I guess, my position. So that was the position that the ORC took. That's the position that our subcommittee took. Those deliberations all happened before really Tony was onboarded and we sort of saw the vision for this upcoming year. So I think it's also just important to kind of like take into account when the discussion happened versus what we know now and what progress we've made building up to it. So I'm still thinking about this one in my head, especially after hearing, you know, what the town manager has been working on the past few meetings and obviously hearing some of the other arguments made tonight. So I don't, you know, my mind is not completely made up on this one. But, you know, at the time the discussions happened, those were the things that were being considered, so.
It is, you know, and I kind of, you look at it both ways and you say, capital improvement is usually a plan, right? It's not an operator. It's not in stone until it's done. And the operating budget is kind of, has to be passed. And it's kind of, you know, we've been trying to allocate more money to capital projects and stuff like that, which is important. So is it a plan? Is it a program? Because how many times in the past 20 years have we got a five-year plan? And then you look back after year two and it's already like, that's gone. Oh, no, we didn't do that. We didn't do this. I think we have to be more structured with it and have a plan that we can, you know. It's easier to say, oh, we're going to do these 10 things in the next 10 years and then never do them, right? But I think it would be more advantageous. I think the sooner you get it is always good. It gives you more time to look at it. And now, when you're doing the operating budget, now you're saying, okay, I have to think, you know, I've had three months to look at this capital and we really do need this because of this. We need to tighten up the operating budget to make sure this capital plan can work. So again, the, you know, the operating budget is a concrete structure where I think the capital plan has a little bit of a less concrete of a base and it can be adjusted a little bit more. But I always think it's good to get information, like, you know, I just think it's something that we've neglected over several years, addressing a lot of items that, you know, end up costing you more money down the road. So I think, you know, it's just a timing thing. I think it's always good to have it as soon as we can possibly have it. But, you know, I think the recommendation is just to kind of align, get it all aligned and stuff like that. It's not a knock on either way. But to me, I'd like to get it as soon as I can get it and stick to it, which is more important than whenever we get it. Recommend, Vice President.
How was, you know, how did this happen in your prior municipality or in your experience in the past? Is anything?
The timeline that's in the charter works for capital. I mean, that's not an issue. Having the freedom on the prior one you discussed with, you know, budget date up to get the budget out earlier would definitely help. I mean, if you're restricted, because that'll be done not too far after the capital, right? So with that bolt done, so the draft versions, you can really dig in and start getting into the questions. And they need to work together, right? Like Jim said, you need to be able to find the money and, you know, move capital around. Some years, you're going to have more pressing needs. Other years, you might put something on the back burner. But to have them as living documents, I mean, this timeframe is fine. I mean, this is normal as far as the budget process. I mean, we start a little later, you know, with the council former government. But most times, it's October, November, you're starting the budget and the capital plan to get ready. So it's not too restrictive.
Number 11, recommendation 11, it's kind of a two-parter and it's a no-brainer. But should the town council identify the issue of unlicensed transient lodging as defined as a priority for enforcement? And should the council take all necessary steps to tax Airbnb's and other hosts of transient lodging in accordance with Mass General law? They were both 9-0 in recommendations. To me, it just seems like a no-brainer. And we, you know, it's writing rules and obeying the rules and enforcing the rules, right? But Council Vice President.
Yeah, so this came to the ORC through public comment. And while the ORC believed it was in its scope to make this recommendation, it did not take the next step in actually drafting an updated ordinance like it did for other recommendations in this package. The ORC just kind of came up late in the ORC's process. But there was a general sentiment that this is something that needed to be looked at. And, you know, I think the nuts and bolts of it weren't ironed out. I think that was kind of left for us to do, so.
I agree. It's more of a recommendation. We're not changing the charter here. We're just, we're getting like an order, get off your butts and do something about this, basically.
Exactly.
Council Ayello.
No, I'm in full agreement.
Council DeMarco. Council Belcher.
I agree.
Council Fusillo. Council Honan.
Can I just throw something in?
Council Munson. We don't want to forget you. I apologize.
Okay, they're not there, so I end here in spirit and in Zoom. I did want to throw out the fact that there was suggestion during this topic of transient lodging to pose the question to the people of Winthrop, not only whether we should get off our butts and look at and review the transient lodging ordinance as it stands and adjust it accordingly, but also to pose the question to the people of Winthrop whether we should allow transient lodging, period. And I just wanted to make sure that I expressed the view of others. That's not necessarily my point of view, but it is something that if others felt as though it was important to even, you know, pose that question. Essentially, all of this stuff that we're suggesting or changes is going to, unless it's an ordinance and we can change it off books, is going to go to a vote to the people. And I just wanted to just throw it out to all of you, whether that question of we should have transient lodging at all should be voted to the people of Winthrop.
Thank you. Comment?
No, and that comment did come up during the ORC. So thank you for kind of filling that in, Council Munson. Yeah, we do have a transient lodging ordinance on the books right now. So I think the spirit of this is to revisit that ordinance. That's the spirit of the recommendation. But that point did come up as well, so.
All right. Recommendation number 12. Should the Inspection Service Department confirm the compliance with the town's signed ordinances as part of its annual review process before the Board of License? 9-0 recommendation. Vice President Ruggiero.
Yeah, this is in that bucket of not an ordinance, not a charter change, but something else. You know, problem, solution. The problem, quote, unquote, is that, you know, our, there's currently a regulation where neon signs and signs, as this states here for cigarettes, beer, and other products and signage, there are a host of regulations surrounding that. If you drive around, you can see sometimes they are being followed. Sometimes they're not being followed. As a check to kind of make sure that those regulations are being enforced, the recommendation would add a line on the renewal application that when Inspection Services will go in and renew your application if you're business here in town, that you would be in compliance with the sign ordinance at that time. If you then go and change things the week after, you know, you would be subject to, you know, whatever violation that there is out there. But at least at that moment, there will be another check in place to make sure that you're abiding by this. Again, sort of in that other bucket.
Council Ayello.
Sounds reasonable, doesn't it?
Council DeMarco.
Yep.
Council Belcher. Council Fusillo. Council Honan.
Again, I think we should be doing what we say and saying what we do and enforcing rules that are in place. So I think it's a good idea.
Councilor Munson?
I agree.
Thank you. And recommendation 13 is more of a list of stuff from the Collins Center proposes. Vice President Regiro, you want to just give a summation?
Yeah, these are a copy and paste of the prior, prior ORC that was chaired by Representative Tarco. We didn't want to lose these technical changes. We did review them. I think, you know, before we vote, we should all go back and double check to make sure it all checks out, especially if we're changing anything else in the charter. But yeah, that's, these are all non-substantive technical edits.
Any comments on these? Councilor Ilo? DeMarco? Belcher? Fisillo? Honan? Munson?
No.
So these are the proposed changes. Do you have anything else, Vice President Regiro?
No, I think we went through. Do we want to go back to number one? I'm not sure if we talked about number one, but.
Yeah, we could go back. I mean, we have.
I don't know if we did, or but.
We did. I think we skipped a few at the beginning, but. We did two, three, four, six, seven, eight. So we missed five, one and five.
Okay.
So yeah, we could go back to those now.
I think we've covered them.
Okay. So let's go back to one. Now, one is kind of a three-parter also. And I don't know how we would, well, let's just go through. One A says, should the size and composition of the town council be reduced slash changed from six precinct councilors, two at-large councilors and a town council president to six at-large councilors and a town council president? This was a six-three vote in favor from the ORC. So what this would do basically is reduce the number of councilors from nine to seven and reduce the composition from six precincts and two at-large to six at-large and maintain the council president. Want to take them individually? Because I don't think this is an all or none, but I mean, I don't know.
I believe that in, in subcommittee, we, we broke it out.
Okay. So we'll talk about the composition first. Now, this is the composition as composed. Obviously, the, the option would be to agree with it or move it to the next step, disagree with it, keep it the way it is, or offer a different composition. I think, in fairness to the ORC, I think their logic was to, you know, I think the thought process behind a lot of their thinking was to increase participation because the vast majority of races over the years have been unopposed. So that I think, I would guess, the thought is if you have less races, you have more, if you have less positions, you'd have more contested. And again, this does go into the terms and everything else. I mean, if the discussion, it's hard to discuss A without B or whatever, because part of the discussion goes into the length of term. If, if you were to have, I guess, whatever amount of councilors you have, if you're having, if you're having six at-large councilors, for example, and you are reducing the term to two years, if that would, that was, that's B, now you're having six people up, seven with the council president potentially, so say six, six people up every two years, where now you have four up every two years. So regardless if they're precinct or at-large, you're having more spots open when you're trying, I think the goal was to create less spots so you'd have more competition. So, you know, some of it goes against each other, but we'll start with Vice President Regiro.
Yeah, so.
With one A.
I was against this twice, once in the ORC and then once in the subcommittee. So the subcommittee, the Rules and Orders Subcommittee came out with a recommendation to just, to effectively just take recommendation, sorry, let me just make sure, to, to, the term of the councilor is being changed from four years to two. That's what came out of subcommittee, that recommendation and that recommendation only. That was two to one, and I think I voted no on that one as well. But I guess, when the ORC started discussing this, you're right, the discussion was based on increasing participation. I think concurrently, a discussion was happening about how do we increase competition? And I think increasing competition and increasing participation are not, they're not the same thing. I think this increases competition and might not necessarily increase participation. I think by the sheer nature of shrinking the council, you're sort of, I mean, you're, the ratio of constituents to councilors is being altered, just like a student-teacher ratio, for example. You know, you want fewer students per teacher, so everyone has more attention. And that's kind of how, that's one way to look at this. At least that's just my opinion here. Also, there were some concerns just surrounding the, every, every counselor being at-large. There's a variety of cases throughout the Commonwealth and elsewhere where that might not be the most representative style of government. Everyone can be from one neighborhood. You know, maybe some neighborhoods are being ignored, even if everyone is from one neighborhood. So there's definitely a lot to consider here with one A, and there's a lot to consider with one B, and there's a lot to consider with one C, but I'll just leave it at one A for now, I think.
Councilor Ilo?
Yeah, I, I don't look favorably upon one A. I think, I understand the spirit of what people are trying to achieve, but I like the relationship of a council to a precinct for those who really want to sort of focus on the logic community, but also constituent services to a smaller group. When you're responsible, when everybody's responsible for the entire town, every counselor you sort of have to worry a little bit about constituent services. It's also much more daunting to run on a town-wide basis, so you'll end up with, you know, I think some possible outcomes where everybody's from precinct five and precinct two and you've got nobody from anyplace else. Because it does take a lot of money, it does take a lot of effort, it does take a lot of campaigning, et cetera, to run town-wide. I just think it would negatively affect the connection between the district councilors and, and their local constituents. So I don't think this achieves what, what was the intent of the spirit, so I'd be against it.
First off, I'd like to say, once again, we've already said this, but I mean, obviously the ordinance review committee did like an impeccable job in putting everything together. Obviously, they worked extremely hard, so I appreciate their efforts. I have, I have some opinions. I go back and forth on all, all three of them. I voted to move all three of them forward. I was the one on the two that voted down, two to one. And I've mentioned this before, I just, I don't feel like I should be the one deciding what Winthrop's government should be. I think the people should have a right to vote on what their representation should be. So that's my opinion, so.
Councilor Belcher?
Thank you. My concerns with, with recommendation one A are partially division of work, like Councilor Ilo mentioned, if everybody's at-large and constituents bring issues up, it's kind of like a hot potato situation, like who's going to take ownership of an issue? Also, as similar as most of our precincts are, there are a lot of unique teachers in them, and I think that it's a dangerous game to take away someone who's focused uniquely on a precinct-specific concern. It also gives less touchpoints to government for the people in town. I appreciate the thought into this, but I think it kind of misses the mark on solving the problem.
Councilor Fisillo?
Yeah, because, you know, I've gone, I've thought about this both ways. It's a really tough one for me in terms of which way to go. I think, you know, there's benefits in both. I do, I do agree with Councilor Belcher, has a lot of good points about touch, touchpoints to government being more accessible. But because I'm so, because I'm so like, sort of divided on which way to go, my personal opinion, I agree with Councilor DeMarco and sort of like, you know, if it gets voted down, it gets voted down, you know? That shouldn't be sort of my say, because this would have to go to vote, it would have to go for a vote. So if that's what the majority of the people in town want, because I don't have any particular leaning, I think that's where I'd be more inclined to send it.
Councilor Honan?
I disagree with this one A. I think that reducing the number of councilors reduces the representation, first of all. I also think that making all of the councilors at-large also reduces representation in specific parts of our community. The, I believe it was the chair of the ORC that came to speak before the council, and he said that, you know, we all care about the point and we're all affected by the airport. But I, I disagree strongly with that. You know, of course we all care about the airport and of course we all care about the point, but, but the people that live on the point are so much more affected by the airport and the airport noise than any of us, and of course it matters more to them, and of course they need somebody speaking for them. That was one of the only races that was contested. Three people ran for that seat. And that's, it's, it's a seat that matters. And I'd like to bring up another point. I speak to my fellow councilors, some of you more often than others, and it's my fellow councilors who are precinct councilors who get specifically emails sent to them directly. I don't think in my term, and now it's been three years, that I've had five emails that have been sent to me directly, specifically just to me about a specific issue that's at-large. However, when I talk to my precinct counselor, fellow councilors, they get calls and emails all the time about specific issues in their precincts. And that's why I think it's so important to keep precinct councilors. They represent their precincts and those very specific areas. And I think Councilor Ilo had on a very strong point, we don't want to have six at-large councilors from precinct five or precinct two. You know, we want to have people that represent all of our community from precincts, you know, that they live in and that they care about, you know, that they care about deeply. It's where they live. And of course, they want representation where they live. And representation is important. This is America. I don't want to decrease the level of representation we have, certainly not on a municipal level. Thank you.
Councilor Munson?
Thank you. And I cough, I'm doing this, and I probably could go on and on, but I'll try to keep it under a minute. I do think, I'm against one A, I am for one B. In short, the goal was to increase participation, and for that reason, I think that one B, reducing the town councilor term from four to two years, would increase more participation, especially for, I think, parents of young children or teenagers. I think it's ideal to have that kind of smaller term, so it's not such a huge commitment, especially, you know, when parents might be ill and you might need to change your focus and your priorities and your time expenditure. So I believe in one B would actually increase the number of people willing to participate as at-large councilors. But as far as one A, I agree with Councilor Ilo in that running for an at-large position, you need to get somewhere in the vicinity of, we'll put it this way, there'd be a lot more coffee, meat and drinks, there'd be a lot more door-to-door, it would be almost impossible to try to get to that kind of saturation where you feel like you've gotten to know the neighborhood or the town in this situation. Whereas precinct councilors, you really do get to know your neighborhood, you really do get to feel their problems. And as, as many of you have already said in the trace moment, you do get those touchpoints and you feel the problems of your precinct more when you're driving through or you're hearing it as you're going to sleep. You actually know those problems. I'm currently working on three, four precinct, two resident issues that have been brought to my attention directly. So I am against one A for in terms of representation and, and I'm for one B for increasing participation.
Okay. Well, we'll get to one B. One B, I think you got one B and one, one C backwards, but that's okay. We'll get to one B and C in a minute. But we got your, the gist of your one A. And I'll just say, I kind of, I think it, one A could almost be broken into two. I, I think the first question is, and the first major thing of this, basically everyone's talked about the at-large councilors. I think Councilor Honan did mention this though, but the, the other major thing is it's reducing the number from nine to seven. So I mean, and it could be six at-large, it could be six precinct councilors and get rid of the two at-large, and now you have, but I think the first question that should have, that should be, come out of this is, do we feel nine is the number? Is seven a better number? So I think that's really, to me, that's question one A1 or whatever. And then question one A2 would be, if you do agree that it should be six instead of eight councilors, what's the composition? And, and I guess it would be at-large, which, you know, it, it's hard, and I'm sure people are sitting out there saying, well, precincts are only 1.6 square miles, everybody knows that, but, but it is unique and we take a lot of pride in being unique in the neighborhoods and such. And I do think that the precinct councilors are very important and, and, and I think a lot of people share that view. The other option is, you know, you could make wards up. So if you wanted to get it, you could do, you know, whatever. One and two could be ward one, and, but then that's getting crazy confusing and we have enough confusion as it is. So I, I mean, to me, I think it's one A1, which is, do we think the number nine is the right number of people? And then one A2, one A2 would be, if it is different than nine, then what should the composition be? Should it be six at-large or should it be six precinct? I, I, again, I, I think, to give deference to the ORC, I think their thought was, when you look at, for example, you look at the school committee, and the school committee is all at-large and it's five or six. So the number is potentially what they're kind of getting to here. And if you look at the number of races that are contested every year, it's far out, I think it's 80% that are contested versus like 20% that are contested on the council. Is that because it's at-large? Is it because it's a school committee? Is it because whatever it is? I don't know. So I think, you know, the thing, and I go back to Councilor DeMarco too, saying that, you know, if we could talk about this for 20 minutes, maybe the, the public should get a vote at it. But I just think if it did go to the public, I think it has to be broken out. I think it needs to be, you know, I, I would be more, if I was to be in favor of one A, I would be more in favor if it was to go to six precinct councilors instead of six at-large councilors. I guess so that would be my, my thought on that. One B, and again, when these are voted on, whatever, they can be amended, changed or just straight voted up or down. One B is the term, should the term of the council president be changed from two years to four years? Vice President Regiro?
This did not come out of the charter, actually, the Rules and Orders Subcommittee with the positive recommendation. But I can recap the discussions, I guess, the best that I can. You know, I think on one hand, you're, you're saying, you could say that with a four-year term, a council president really has the time it takes to go and push an agenda and see a vision and see it through. The two-year term might not be enough. We had a litany of council presidents come in and, you know, to the ORC, and it seemed like it was kind of a 50/50 on this one. Some folks think that, yeah, you know what, I wish I had another two years. Other folks say, you know, if I was doing a good job, I could get elected again after two years and, you know, I could have, could have continued on. I think the reason why I voted against this one was because I think that the council president, being the highest ranking position in the town, should be held the most accountable. And if elections are our method of accountability and if it's our job interview, then I think those should occur more regularly. I also think with that current setup where, you know, we have some folks roll off, some folks roll on, and the council president is up every two years, you have some continuity there. And so the council president will go in with. And so the council president will go in with, um, you know, with some, not, not a whole new group of folks, but, but some, some returning people from the past. Not a reflection on our current council president, of course. But, you know, when we have these discussions, you have to kind of speak in the hypothetical, so. But yeah, that's just sort of where, where I'm at.
Counsel Ayello.
Yeah, it's, um, and I'm going to contradict myself when we get to C, so don't worry about that, just give you guys a advance. This, this doesn't resonate well with me either, I think, for the, for the, the, um, for the reasons that the vice president described. And I would further say, you know, getting, saying you want to be a precinct counselor is sort of one thing and saying you want to be town council president is a much bigger thing. I wish personally we had a mayor and we could pay somebody and they could do the job full-time. That was that, that form of government, I mean, that's what I would prefer, but that's not what we have. I think the notion that, uh, effectively people have to hold down a full-time job and be town council president, which is just about a full-time job. To think about doing it for four years is going to reduce, I think, the playing field of people who want to become town council president and therefore reduce competition. It's somewhat related to A in that, um, if we get rid of the, the town-wide positions, those are sort of the natural people who have already got a base and could provide a competitive threat to whoever the town council president is. So I think the balance that we got today works and I think the timeframe around two years, given what we got today, works. Without a radically different form of government.
Counsel DeMarco.
Just a, a manner of clarification, um, you know, we talked, I, I, I talked earlier about, you know, I'd like to see the voters vote on this. Just to remind you that there is a process, it doesn't automatically go to the voters right away, it has to go to the state first, so I wanted to say that. But, uh, my comments are the same as the last ones, so.
Counsel Belcher.
I think that Counsel Jero hit on an important point, that the council president has the most power, so it should be the most accountability. And I think the direction and achievements that the council president is, is attaining and, and moving through is evident in two years so that the people can then decide they want to reelect him and move forward. But I, and I also agree with Counsel Ayello's point that that's a huge commitment for four years. And I then will contradict myself.
Counsel Fusella.
Well, I can't wait for you to contradict yourself, but, um, I do, I, I am personally in favor of, of changing it to four years because like Counsel Ayello said, it is a big commitment, you have to really want to be town council president to do this. So I think, you know, winning an election here and whether, you know, you become town council president, you should be able to see, you know, things, you see things through. I think, um, in two years' time is, is not necessarily a long enough time, uh, especially running for a townwide office of that magnitude, which is usually guaranteed to have a competitor. I think you deserve to see, uh, your vision go through. But yeah, I, I, I think, I think we'll be in a lot more agreement on, on part three, or C rather.
Counsel Honan.
I disagree with, uh, four years, I think two years is fine. I think the accountability piece is one thing and I think, um, the voters should have the chance to vote out a president or, or vote for a new president within two years if they don't like, or they don't think that the current president is effective. That being said, most projects that a town council president might be working on take many years. You know, we see that, I've been on this council for three years and things can move like molasses. So, um, thinking you're going to accomplish something even in four years is not a given. So I, I think the accountability, accountability piece is the most important and to be able to vote out, um, an ineffective or, um, ineffective, um, council president is important.
Counsel Munson.
I would succinct, I would say that, um, an extra, uh, two years for the town council president is, um, it would just be easier just to be able to keep it the way it is. I think that any of our, our proposed change should have a solution to a problem. And, um, you know, there have been reelections where the town council president had won. And so I think that while I agree that, uh, a lot of projects take a long time to happen, I would, uh, I would just seem, I think it's a lot cleaner to have a two-year, uh, term as opposed to having a four-year term with a recall measure.
I'll, I'll give an opinion at which I, I'm six in one, half dozen the other. I think, I think Counsel Fusella made a really good point, that it is a huge commitment to get to that point. And, uh, two years is an extremely short period of time. Personally, if it started, if it, if it ever did get passed, I, I would also ask that it starts in 2027 or 25 or whatever it would be, but, um, it is a, you know, it's, it's a huge commitment as I think everybody has attested to, all of, all of this, every one of us, it's a huge commitment. Four years on the council, whatever it is, two years as a president, it's a, it's a, it's an incredible commitment. And, um, you know, I, I can't imagine anybody does any of this foolhardedly because it's just too much of a commitment to, to do that. I do think if it, if it works, if it's worked, you know, there's no need to change it. This is something that if I was voting on this, if this was on a ballot, I think I would vote yes, because I think it's the right thing to do, but, I, I mean, I could see this both ways, I really could. It, it definitely takes a lot of time to get anything done and you look at projects that have been done and when you look at the completion and you see the search committee or whatever started it, it's amazing that none of the people that are, that are getting the praise have been involved for, you know, three or four or five years and it's, it's sad in a lot of ways, but it's, it's a huge commitment. So it's almost like, it's almost like forced retirement, which maybe isn't a bad thing at some stage, but, um, I, I don't know, to me, I would probably be, I, I would, I would go with Counsel DeMarco on this and say, let the voters think about it and see what they say. But I, I could, two years is a really short period of time for, I, you know, and, and going down to one C two is the same kind of thing. Two years is, is a very short period of time, four years is an incredibly long period of time. I, I wish we had the option of three years and I remember when we started this and we wrote the charter, that was the, that was the timeframe that everybody thought was, was correct. It was three years and it just, unfortunately, it doesn't work for us, we don't have that option. But I think that's the right answer and, you know, we got two bad answers to pick from, but I don't know, I, you know. Going to one C and one C is the term of councilors from four years to two years. And we'll say, and this, again, one B was a seven to two in favor recommendation from the O R C. One C was a seven to two recommendation in favor from the O R C. Vice President Wajeroa.
This was, um, passed out of Rules and Ordinance two to one, I was the one dissenting vote. I, you know, we sort of, uh, kind of covered it, but, um, you know, four years seems too long. It's a, it's a big undertaking, it's a long commitment, especially as a precinct counselor where, um, you know, you, you need to represent, not talking about just like a town, we're talking about a neighborhood in a town for four full years. A lot can happen in four years, just ask some of our predecessors who are no longer sitting here, they joined the council as, uh, you know, well, I don't want. You, you know, a lot happens in four years, people's lives, uh, take a turn. However, with that said, I'm not sure I would have run if it were a two-year term and not a four-year term. I think, um, this is a great opportunity to, to get involved with town government, especially having a four-year term. You get to see a couple of budget cycles before you, um, and participate, obviously, but, um, no one's an expert on day one. No one's an expert on year one, no one's an expert on year 20. But at least with having the four-year term, you can, um, kind of be a part of it and honestly have a leadership role. Maybe, you know, you don't chair a committee in your first year on the council, but at least you're learning. And it's a good way to kind of make sure that there's some level of experience, um, you know, on this body as time, as time goes along. So that was, that's my personal opinion. I do, of the three here, I think changing it from four years to two for a counselor position, um, is the one that I'm most amenable to. I think that there, you know, none of these are easy decisions, but I think this is the hardest one for me to weigh just because I do definitely see, um, the value in, in the shorter, the shorter, uh, term. It might be, like I said, it might be an easier barrier to entry for some folks. In my case, it, it wouldn't have been, just because, um, just as soon as you're ready and to contribute and you learn some stuff, you've got to start, you know, making signs and fundraising and getting going again, so, um, you know, two sides to the story. But this one did pass out of O R C and Rules and Ordinance.
Counsel Ayello.
Yes, so, uh, I think I'm the oldest person on the council that's present, so, uh, I would say, I've been around government my entire life, in and out, um, but this is the first time I've been in an elected position. And, um, you know, I thought I knew a lot about how government works from a whole bunch of other different perspectives and I got to tell you, I'm still on a learning curve, right? So I'm seven years old and I'm still learning this job after a year and a little bit more than a year. And I think I have to go through another budget cycle, another year before I really feel good about this. And for, I think most people are on that same absorption rate, the younger ones probably can pick it up faster than I pick it up these days. But, um, I think to sort of then walk away after two years, you sort of finally got to a point of effectiveness and probably, uh, more enjoyment, uh, because you can figure out how to be a bit more strategic about your role. Two years sort of just is, I think would be wasteful for a lot of people. Now, it'd be, it'd be great if you could figure out how to make the first term four years and then any subsequent term two years after that. You're not always going to have two to four years, but I, I, I'm not smart enough to figure that out. But I, I, I do think, um, I, I do think, um, I know it's tough to get people to run for these positions, but I think you want someone who's quite serious and understand you've got to make a good time commitment and it's going to take you a while to figure out how this, how this place works, how any municipality works. And I think four years is, um, better than two.
Counsel DeMarco. Counsel Belcher.
I am against this, I think like Counsel Jero and Ayello touched on, it takes a while to kind of learn what's going on. And when you think of it in terms of budget cycles, I think that's an important lens to view it from. Having just gone through one budget cycle to learn the ropes and actually getting excited for the next one, to kind of have your feet on the ground. But for councilors as opposed to the president, the work that you do, I think, is significantly less visible to the voters. It's a lot of committee work, it's a lot of stuff behind the scenes while you're learning and, and doing things like that. So I think that it would be a huge disadvantage for precinct councilors to have to run every two years and kind of really sell themselves on the, a lot of the background stuff that they've done. Whereas with the president, it's more directional and bigger picture projects and things like that.
Counsel Fusella.
I am, I'm for this, uh, and the reason why I'm for this is specifically why I was, I was more leaning towards recommendation one A is that there is not a lot of participation. I know that myself, Counsel Ayello and Counsel DeMarco ran unopposed in this past election. And so the majority of, of, uh, precinct, um, elections are unopposed, with the exception of Counsel Belcher, Belcher this time around, recognizing that. So, but, um, with that being said, I don't think it's that big of an undertaking to have to run every two years. And with, I mean, knowing my own situation, four years is a very long time. And I have no idea where I'm going to be in four years, uh, whether that's in precinct one, precinct two, three, four, or even in Winter, who knows? So I think, you know, just keeping in mind that like four years is a very long time and it's not necessarily the commitment of a town council president, which is the reason why I was for town council president being changed to four years and the, um, precincts to be changed to two years. Because I think that, you know, there's different things that go into it in terms of the time. Granted, all of it is a lot of time, but I think that, you know, you have to keep in mind that how long four years is and, you know, how long people want to do this for.
Counsel Honan.
I am, I'm torn on this one. I agree that, um, two years might attract more people to run for this position. Four years is a very long time and, but at the same time, I, I think it's important to have knowledge and experience on this council. And with everybody just running for two years, you might not have anybody with any experience longer than four years at any one time, which I think would be a shame. So it's, um, this is a tough one. Leaning towards a no, but not a definite.
Counsel Munson.
Well, I've already, um,
You have.
expressed my misguided intent to vote for, uh, one C when I said one B. But, um, basically I, I, I wanted to reiterate what I said before, which is I believe in, in changing the town council term, um, to the town counselor, precinct town counselor specifically, um, to, uh, to two years from four. And I also wanted to just mention to everyone that's still thinking about which way to go. There's been a lot of, um, you know, renewal of, of town councilors, just because it's a two-year term doesn't mean that wisdom and, and, and experience and being on the, a town council for long term can happen. But look at some, look at our town council president, he's been a part of the town council now for 16-plus years. That, that, that wisdom, that experience is, um, not, you know, precluded by having this change for four to two years. I think that when you're doing well, you're going to be able to campaign easily and, and get reelected. So I think this is going to commit to participation. While I have the four though, I would like to ask you, um, Council President, if we could and how we could do this, since, um, we've made it clear that one A could really be broken up into two different, um, pieces. And, um, how do we go about, uh, changing the, the nature of the proposed changes to be a little more, um, clear? Uh, in, in that, um, you know, like, for example, the, the precincts, the one A could be, uh, just one A one, which could be reduce the number of town councils from nine to, uh, seven, et cetera, et cetera. I'm just asking just a logistical process question in addition to reiterating my support.
Yeah, what, when we get to voting, um, we would vote, we would, just like we would at any other council motion. We would, somebody would make a motion, we'd second it and we'd vote on it. You could amend, you know, for, if somebody made the motion, for example, on one A, to say, okay, we reduce the, we reduce the, uh, composition of the town council from precinct councilors to at-large councilors, then someone could make the, um, someone could make an amendment saying, okay, I, I would like to make an amendment to change the number of councilors from nine to seven. And that motion would get seconded, if it got seconded, it would get voted on and then that motion would be, that amendment would be on the table. So you could make an amendment, you could, when we get to the point of voting, you could come up with a new motion. You could make a motion to make it six years or whatever. You know, you have the ability as a counselor to amend or create a new motion as to any one of these. Each one will be orig, will be motioned as written and then they would be amended as needed.
Just was, um, curious about the exact language of a motion that I would consider making and that, I would love to see the one A one worded in a way where it's very clear that where the, the proposed change would reduce the number of town councilors from nine to, uh, let's say, seven with, um, the at-large positions being removed, you know, something of that clarity. So I just, I'm just a little confused as to how to deliver it on.
Right, I think, yes, I think you're absolutely right that any motion that is voted on has to be perfectly clear. If it's going to go to the voters, it needs to be really spelled out. And whatever goes to the voters, there needs to be an education process as well. And, and I will just say on one C, on the two years, um, I, I'm against the two years and the, the main reason I'm against two years for a counselor is, you know, and Counsel Honan, um, mentioned it, is you have the possibility, if the council president stays at two years and the council went to two years, you have the possibility of changing the nu, the entire composition of the council every two years. And Counsel Ayello mentioned that, you know, he's here a year and a half and he's still learning and it's a learning curve and, um, you know, and that's a hundred percent accurate. It, it is definitely a learning curve, it is unlike most anything any of us have ever done before, it's a totally different process. Counsel Honan mentioned how things, you know, I think she said moved like molasses in some situations and she's a hundred percent accurate and that's. in some situations, and she's a hundred percent accurate, and that's, a lot of that is just municipal government, I think, and that's the way it works. And none of us really in, in your real lives are used to that. You're used to being able to, you know, one of the major things that started this form of government was to make things quicker and make things happen instead of going to a town meeting once a year and making an adjustment and then maybe having a special town meeting. You could do it in a twice, uh, twice-a-month process, but it's still incredibly slow. Um, you know, I, I could go over examples, but I, I really don't want to, but it's just a slow process. And to do that in a two-year per, period, um, you know, the, the other thing to me that I would against that is it gets, you know, if you have a special interest, two years isn't a bad sentence to do to try to get your special interest passed. Four years, you have to think about it and say, okay, I can make that point in the first six months, what am I gonna do the next three and a half years? So I think it, it, it gives more credibility to a candidate that's willing to, to run for that four-year cycle. Uh, we did have two-year cycles at the very beginning when we started it, 'cause that's the way we got onto a, a pattern. If we started at four years from the beginning, we'd still be turning over the council potentially. So at the beginning, we had the even number precincts and the candidate with, uh, whoever got the lowest amount of votes in the two-at-large, they had two-year terms. And everyone else had a four-year term, and that's how we got on a rotation. Um, but I, I, I am against this. I, I'm just, it, not in favor of potentially turning over a council. And again, if we get back to what I think was the premise, and I think it's an extremely worthy premise to do a lot of these questions, was to get an increase in participation. So if it's only two years, more people are gonna run. However, the problem is, if you're doing it every two years, now instead of having four councilors up, plus the council president every two years, now you have nine councilors up every two years. So if you're trying to get more people, we can't even get the four or five that we have going. So to me, it, it's kinda counterproductive to what we're trying to do. Um, and again, and it is a process and it's a commitment to, 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 to pull those papers and to do the work and to try to see people and try to tell them your vision and explain to them what your thoughts are. It's time-consuming and it, and it's not every two years. Once you're starting it, in another four months from now, in the spring, you're gonna be starting it all over again for whoever's up, whoever chooses to run in the fall. So it's, it's really, a, a two-year term is like a year-and-a-half term, 'cause you're trying, you're starting to run again already. But again, as much as I am not in favor of 1C, it would be interesting, I would be interested to see what the town felt about this and, and agree with Counselor DeMarco. But I personally think I would love to educate people as to why this one is not, to me, um, i- is the right thing to do. We go to Recommendation 5, I think is what we have left, and that is a provision, um, which talks about recall. It allows a recall provision of an elected official, um, and then 5B talks about reasons and grounds, um, which would, and, and procedures that would need to take place for such a recall. And I will say, just to get a, a little bit of background, then I'll give it to the Vice President, is, um, I believe the recall provision couldn't be, as written, couldn't be done six months within a, prior to an election and six months after the election. So if you were to ever go to two-year terms, there'd really be no opportunity for a recall. It would, I think, if a recall provision is passed, it's really towards people who have four-year terms, uh, that it would be more affected by. But I'll, and this was, um, 5A, which, um, asked for a provision to be put in, was passed seven to two, and 5B, which asked, should the recall language include the reasons or grounds for which an elected official be recalled? Um, and that passed five to four, which was the closest vote, I think, in the, in the O R C. Uh, Vice President Gero.
Uh, yeah, so the, the proposed language is in the packet.
Mm-hmm.
That is what passed 5A. 5B was an attempt to, uh, it was an attempted compromise in the O R C to, you know, some of the concerns with this were that, you know, frivolous, uh, recall campaigns could be run. Um, a recall campaign would cost the town, uh, resources, it would cost the town money, uh, it would, uh, damage, you know, a volunteer's, uh, reputation. Uh, it's a pretty serious action to take. So the, the, the spirit of 5B was for that, um, you know, uh, it was for, you know, let's, let's play some guardrails around how we're going to allow a recall or not allow a recall. Um, a compromise, some may say. That failed. Um, so the, the language here is what is placed in front of us. It's here specifically for us. We can do whatever we want with it, but I think it's important that folks know that an attempt to compromise and make this palatable was, uh, tried and failed. Um, I was against this in O R C, I was against this in the subcommittee. The subcommittee voted this one down. Um, you know, to me, I think when we're talking about accountability, um, the best way to hold elected officials accountable is through the election process. I think that by having a recall provision, we are diluting the power of our elections. Historically, um, municipal elections have lower turnout, um, than, you know, a presidential election or a, or a midterm. I think that by having a recall provision, turnout could be even lower, because folks are gonna say, well, you know, I don't like so-and-so, we can just get rid of them anyways. You know, this is the United States, we all can vote. Uh, I think that's really where the power needs to be held. You know, I think that there, um, I think that if someone, an elected, does something so egregious, um, where, you know, people aren't happy about it, um, they'll, they'll know. Um, and so, again, this is a volunteer position, for all intents and purposes. Nobody's doing this for their health. No one's doing this necessarily for fun. Uh, we're all here to, to serve a purpose, so I think people take it seriously. Um, and so to me, I really didn't see a need for this one. Uh, I should also add that, um, part of this O R C package includes a recommendation to, um, set the bar a little bit higher for attendance. So, and I think we had discussed that a few meetings back. So, you know, if you're going to, um, hold councilors accountable, making sure that they're attending the meetings, this is, um, I think that was sort of maybe the biggest gripe in the past about the performance of folks in the councils was just attendance and representation. And so I think that was solved for in a prior recommendation.
Counselor Aiello.
Yeah, I think this creates a circus up against it.
Counselor DeMarco.
A couple things. Uh, it is interesting how a lot of these, um, recommendations play off each other. Two years to four years, four years to two years, recall provision where you can't be recalled in the first six months, you can't be recalled in the last six months. So really, if it's a two-year term, you have a one-year window to recall somebody. Um, and, and, you know, Counselor Honan said earlier, you know, that the, the two-year term, you know, it's, it's a way to keep, uh, election integrity and keep people in check if, you know, shorter term. Um, I've always been in favor of recall petitions, um, but the bar has to be set high, okay? It can't be, I think everybody who's, who's seen the recall petition on the council knows it won't pass at four percent of registered voters in that, in that area. That, that's just too low of a bar. It, it, it won't happen. Um, another thing I wanted to, um, bring up, uh, President Luteri, is, anything that came out of the ordinance, uh, uh, committee with a pro, positive recommendation doesn't need a second, correct?
Correct.
It's only the ones that were, did not come up with a positive recommendation. So, uh, Counselor Muntzen, I'm actually working on language for the recall petition to, uh, amend it to say, um, that the affidavit is signed, instead of saying that the affidavit is signed by at least four percent of the registered voters for any town-wide or at-large position and four percent for any other elected officials. I, right now, with what I'm working on, I've changed it to say, signed by at least fifty percent of the voters as of the most recent regular town election, any town-wide or at-large position, and at least fifty percent of the voters for the most recent regular town election for any elected officials. This sets the bar up way high, so you can't have a frivolous recall, uh, provision, petition. This would, what I, this, I believe, this amendment would make it so, p, you really have to have an, a huge uprising against this individual to have that recall take place.
Counselor Belcher.
Um, I think that when you look at all the O R C recommendations from the lens of what problem does this solve, I don't know that this solves a problem that's existed in the town so far. Not to say that it's not important to think about terrible things that could happen in the future, but I think that this is logistically very difficult. It could be costly to the town to run recall elections, um, and like other people have mentioned, if we move to two-year terms, there's really only a year, so it probably won't happen, but the reality is, if it exists, it could. So you kinda have to think about what's the price tag on that, what's the labor cost for that as well. Um, I just don't think this solves any problems that we've had as a community.
Counselor Fisillo.
I think, you know, um, I, I agree with a lot of things being said around the table. I think that an attendance policy sort of sets a lot of that in place and sort of, you know, holds people accountable. If they're not here, they're not here. And, you know, if they commit a crime, they have to step down anyway. Uh, so, I think, or, or they're, and then, you know, if there's something, as Counselor Gero said, if there's something egregious, um, that's, you know, that's not a crime, but it's, you know, very heavily on favorite, I think there's a lot of pressure in terms of being able to stay on the council. So I, I don't see, I don't really see a need for it. Um, so at this moment, I would be against it.
Counselor Honan.
Um, this is a democracy. If you don't like the way somebody's voting, you can vote them out. Um, I think a recall, this recall provision specifically would lead to smear campaigns, slander, witch hunts, um, and I'm absolutely against it.
Counselor Muntzen.
Um, you know, the cost to the town, uh, the, the actual term of the, the, uh, council president or the, the councilors as a form of accountability, so you can vote someone out. But there is a situation now with a lot of the four-year terms where I could see, um, a recall being an effective tool in a situation that may, may not have happened so far in Winter's history, but could still happen. I do believe in accountability and that's why I do believe a, a recall that does potentially have a place in Winter's government. The only thing that I would just do is along what Rob was trying to do is make it so that there's no way that frivolous, um, you know, uh, recall could happen. And, and the numbers, from what I gather, what Rob was trying to do, or Counselor DeMarco should, more professionally spoken, uh, just was trying to do was to say fifty percent of the last, um, vote. It makes it a moving target, it's hard to actually pinpoint, so I was just wanting to propose, if we're gonna do something like along those lines and make a motion to amend this, I would just put a flat number. Uh, when I did the research comparatively against other towns and to other people that live in the homework, but it looks like, uh, eighteen or twenty percent would be around the, the, the middle of the vote. Um, but then that falls around two thousand votes. If you do two thousand votes, um, to actually bring it to the townwide, uh, uh, vote, then you really are reducing anybody's ability to get a frivolous recall out there. Um, secondarily, another number that needs to be added, if we're gonna do a recall amendment, would be the number of, uh, signatures required to even pull papers. And I think it would need to be more than one, which right now is just one. And that means that one map, one loose card could actually just ruin someone's reputation, have an article written about it, and it's just drama and it's not good. I think that if you were to have the same number of votes that you actually have to pull, or same number of signatures you need to have to actually run for that position, would be the same number of, uh, signatures needed to actually pull the papers to, to launch a recall.
And, um, I'll just end it with, I, I think there is a place for a recall provision. I think we've been fortunate that we haven't, in seventeen, eighteen years, we haven't had anything that would even come close to that. But I think that, you know, you, when we, when we created the charter, we didn't create it for that specific period of time. We don't know what's gonna happen, we don't know, there's just a crazy world out there. But I, I think the standard should be incredibly high. Um, but I, I don't think the provision itself is unwarranted. I just think it would need to come with a, an extremely high threshold, um, whatever the percentage happens to be, and I, and I agree with Counselor Muntzen that there obviously has to be a, a, a high threshold of just getting it to that point. Um, but just because nothing has happened in the past, I don't think you could put a price on it. If something's that egregious that needs to be addressed, then it needs to be addressed. Um, hopefully, it would be something that would be there that we would never, ever, ever have to use. Um, but doesn't mean it shouldn't be there because we don't wanna use it, but, so I, I, again, I, I would think that this would be something that should be passed forward, um, and I would support some type of language with an amendment, making it, uh, you know, diff, extremely difficult to achieve. All right, so we've gone through them, and, um, you know, the next process would be, I would, I would still like to have an opportunity for public to be heard if they wanna be heard, and then we would have, I don't know if it would require a special meeting or not, I think the majority of these are, one way or the other, relatively simple and would, you know, pass or fail relatively easily. Um, I do think there'll be motions and amendments and questions, and there could be other things brought up by councilors if they chose. So, you know, my, my suggestion would to be to keep this on the ballot. I think the goal would be to vote this, um, in February, um, either at the first meeting in February, and to have an, another meeting here to hash out any questions we had. We still need to get some answers in regards to, um, you know, school committee vacancies and housing authority vacancies and, um, you know, before we vote on that, should we be voting on that or should we not be? Um, so I think we will take the next meeting to answer some questions, get some more feedback from the public, give councilors the opportunity to get, like Counselor Muntzen said, to get, um, amendments in a, in a, in a, in a timely manner into the council and to get it in a, uh, well-written format that could be easily understood. But I thank everyone for their participation. I think it's, it's good, it's good to talk about stuff. And most of these things, we might've agreed one way or the other, but there was still enough discussion to me that, you know, it, it's good discussion and if we have questions about it, um, for what we decide. But we will move on, I'm sure a lot of the audience is thrilled about. And we will go to public comments. Do we have public comments? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jack, our precinct one. I'm trying to get ahead of an issue that's gonna come up for discussion, I, I think, I hope. It's about biking in Winter. There's a few things, uh, that I mentioned in the previous meeting, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say them again. There was a lot of discussion about the bike lane on Betlands Road. It was well-talked about, uh, I don't know, discussion, it was on the agenda maybe a couple of times. But anyways, there was a lot of participation, uh, speaking about whether it was a worthwhile project. I think it was after the second meeting, I'm not positive, that it was, it was decided that the bike lane was not a, a good idea for Betlands Road, and it hasn't been discussed since. I mentioned, uh, that I didn't hear much discussion about the sheroes that were painted on the streets of Winter. I did some research and, um, there was discussion at the town council meeting and it was decided that we wouldn't, the town of Winter wouldn't put sheroes on the road at the town's expense. And then, uh, after that, there was a grant that was, uh, provided to the town by the state that paid for some of the, uh, work to be done to, uh, paint the sheroes on the streets. With that, uh, and I don't think there was much discussion about it in, in public, that the, and I think it was the town manager's decision to go ahead with the project because there was money provided. So that leads me to, uh, just because there's money provided... just because there's money provided for a project doesn't make it right. There's been a lot of talk outside of this room about whether there should or shouldn't be bike lanes on, um, Bevair Street. I don't, I don't know where they lead to or where they finish, uh, I've expressed, uh, a number of times that, and it's a national problem, it's a national discussion at this That bike sheroes or bike lanes could give a person a false sense of security, especially a young person, a false sense of security about being on a road that has a bike path. Just because, uh, we're getting some type of money, and I'm not sure how much it's going to cost the town, I don't know if anybody here knows how much it's going to cost the town just to stop this program, I've heard a figure of one million or two million to get the money for, uh, provided by the town for the engineering and, and taking of land, or whatever that, whatever that process is. I haven't heard much about the process, I don't know if it's been spoken about in this I mentioned, uh, Mr. Demarcos' comments about sheroes on Crest Ave, and, uh, of course I'm against it. At the previous meeting, or, or a month ago, maybe, I'm not sure what it was. And so Mr. Cala, uh, stated at that meeting twice that there are no sheroes on Crest Ave, so left me a little bit confused. After the meeting, I went up there and took pictures of ten sheroes on Crest Ave. I don't think it's fair of, of a town person or employee to confuse such an important, uh, topic. Whether he was confused or anybody else was confused. The research I did told me in September twenty-two of two thousand and twenty, that Mr. Cala stated at a town council meeting that he was the person that laid out the areas or the spots where he wanted the private contractor to place the sheroes. I don't know how he could be so confused about the matter. I just don't think it was fair for him to say that at the meeting without, you know, doing some research like I usually do before I comment. So I hope we can get to the bottom of this, I'm trying to get ahead of it, maybe we don't go forward with this TIPs project at this point, or, or it could change concerning the bike, uh, the, the bike lanes and sheroes, maybe some other, maybe some further discussion would, would be necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Peter Gill. You're new, Peter.
I want to know.
There you go.
Sound good.
Okay, thank you. Um, still learning how to use a computer. I just wanted to make a-
Peter Gill, precinct five.
Yes, thank you, Vice President. Um, on the, on the, uh, situation on, on counselors, I, I firmly believe that, that precinct counselors, uh, should remain, um, if we could, if you're going to cut the number of counselors, we could probably go away with the, uh, would be applied, right? I, I like the way it is with the two applied as precincts, uh, as precinct counselors. As far as their terms are concerned, I'm very concerned, we went to three-year terms. Possibility would be that we would have every two years a home counselor. So I, I think that the four-year thing is, is absolutely necessary, and the fact that they, that the council would only return all, um, half of its, uh, half of its membership every, uh, two years. Um, as a former council president, um, I'm firmly, uh, in favor of leaving the town council president term as a candidate. Yes, it was difficult, um, having to come up and do another campaign, um, but, um, I felt that, um, that I still feel that it, it, uh, that particular position, um, uh, you need, the person needs to be held accountable, if people aren't satisfied with, with the performance, um, they, they just don't hold the minute yet, that's all. So, uh, my, my three things, um, I like the precinct counselors, um, I like they have four-year terms, like that three-year term gets in for the council president. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Any other public comment? Seeing none, correspondence. Denise?
Uh, we did receive one email from Donna Riley, just, um, speaking about the final environmental impact report from Logan Airport.
Which is on the website.
It's on our website, and we have till January twenty-third for any kind of public comment towards it.
All right. Finance Committee report.
Yes, so the Finance Committee met, um, before this meeting, and we had three things on the agenda. Um, that was a vote to appropriate certified free cash, uh, a vote to transfer money from the salary reserve and appropriate some money from free cash to, uh, non-union COLAs, cost of living adjustments, and a vote to transfer five thousand from the council reserve to town manager general office, uh, recognition. Um, so all three of those, uh, were voted unanimously, uh, with positive recommendations coming out of committee, and that's all.
All right, and those will be brought up in old business. School Department report, we have not had a school committee, uh, committee since our last council meeting. Town Manager report.
Thank you, Council President. Um, quick update on the, there's been some concern and, you know, address, concerns addressed about the parking lot, you know, behind an FKO, on the municipal lot there. Um, we have removed some of the school vehicles, obviously they were sold, there's a couple of DPW trucks left, uh, we received the information from the department heads, those will be going up, municipal bid along with the older fire trucks, we have two older fire trucks that'll be going up, they're not parked in there, but, uh, they're on the lots, uh, but those will be going up as well. Uh, with the new municipal, um, lot, you know, ordinance that was passed, we'll obviously have to look at some signage in that lot, but we do have several commercial vehicles that are parking in there. Um, we've reached out to one of the owner's delivery company, uh, they're going to move the vehicles out in the next week or so, and then we got to get in touch with this disposal company and, uh, truck that's parked with a bucket on it, that's got to go as well, so we're working on getting rid of the rest of those, but, um, we did find the map, I, uh, produced it for Counselor Iello who wanted it, as far as, you know, where the church lots, uh, spots are and where our lots are, but we're trying to get a handle on the, you know, overnight parking's only supposed to be residents with stickers and, you know, the people that are parking there are not, so, um, but I did reach out, I did speak to the delivery owner, those are larger vehicles, so they're going to be moved out, made some recommendations, you know, there's other spots in town that you can rent spots or find another place to put them, but they can't go in that lot, so, um, we did take care of that. We have the, um, finished the interviews, I announced at the last meeting, we do have a, we put an offer on, it has been accepted, uh, for the CFO position, um, we hired Dylan Cook, uh, currently is the, um, Business Manager for the Chelsea Public School Systems, he also, obviously he has some, uh, municipal experience as well with the town of Wellesley prior in his career, so, um, brought Dylan in, we, um, had him speak with Robbie, had a good meeting there, um, and, you know, after three good interviews with three good candidates, we felt Dylan was the best pick, so, uh, he will start, um, Monday, January thirtieth, um, so let's give thirty days notice to Chelsea, which was fair, so we're looking forward to that, so that position has been filled, we're excited about that. Um, the, speaking of, you know, it was brought up on the public comments, we did, and was brought up by, um, another resident before, we are asked, um, CHA, our engineering firm for the TIP project, to get some three-D renderings done, uh, what that would cost, so they're working on that price now, what sections they would do, and then what the cost would be, so I'll be back to the council later, we, once we get the final numbers in on that. Um, there's also been some concern raised, you know, through, whether it's Walden or a few other streets with regard to sidewalks, um, and working with the DPW director on that, taking a look at some ways we can either slow the traffic down on Walden, maybe improve some visibility where it meets Pauline, and then other areas in town that, you know, we've had constituent requests for sidewalks, so we're looking at all that, put the plan together, and then we'll come back, you know, with some funding options and try to get those installed. Um, I did have a reach out, uh, we did get an email, I think some of the councils got it from the owners of the marketplace, um, Chris Wallace, um, with regard to concern over the black containers, um, I'm going to meet with them next week about that, but, you know, we're going to take a look into it, see what the Board of Health did or didn't approve, and find out, you know, what their options are, because obviously, supply chain issues, what they've got in stock, what they can get, you know, they've got concerns over the black containers and how it impacts their business, so we want to make sure we look into that. Um, and I also sent out to the council, we don't have it on this agenda, but the draft trash ordinance that went out, I'd like to see if we can get it maybe on the next council meeting, yeah, to kind of start kicking that around and, uh, hopefully get that passed so we can look to, you know, instituting it in the springtime, so. Other than that, obviously I'm open to questions for any council members, and thank you, and happy New Year, everybody.
Counselor Demarcos.
Uh, happy New Year, Attorney. Um, one thing, um, I had mentioned this to you, uh, the other day, I, we really, um, I keep thinking about the middle school and what the update is, and this is something I think we should probably be discussing every meeting at this point, I think it's that important. So what, what is the latest, where are we at, just so everybody knows?
Sure, uh, we're doing some homework on, based on the council recommendations, looking at, you know, potential some demo costs, um, also we did a tour of the building just to kind of get a lay of the land, we went and walked the auditorium, uh, the gym, you know, obviously there's some thoughts of, you know, do we do what the Lynn did with the Lynn Auditorium, and maybe do some things and have some concerts and shows there, do we, you know, keep the gym, obviously there's a big need for parking wreck there, and what does that look like, and, you know, the impact on the, potentially on the rink and everything else, so I mean, we're just, we're still doing some homework on that, we'll look to discuss it, I think at the next council meeting, um, you know, potentially, uh, and then go from there, but that's what we've done in the meetings since the last meeting.
Okay, and, um, I know there's a lot of, uh, material in the, uh, middle school itself, the old middle school itself, a lot of tables, a lot of chairs, have we looked at selling any of that stuff that we don't need?
We, we have, we've had auction people in there, we've had people take, uh, purchase certain stuff, and most of the stuff that is left, if not all of it, has been basically told to us that it has no-
No value.
-real value, I mean, we would love to look to, to donate it to certain organizations, there are a lot of chairs, a lot of old, 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 um, IT equipment, um, you know, but the vast majority of stuff with any value has been sold, liquidated.
And then, uh, finally, a public safety question, getting back to the roads, has there been any communication? Now, you know, the COVID's over, the traffic is starting to pile up again going into Orient Heights, well, it has, it is piled up going into Orient Heights, has there been any public safety discussions with people from the city of Boston about making any fundamental public safety changes on the way out of town?
I can report, uh, the meeting that Barbara Hill jointly with, with TSAC.
Okay.
If you want.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. No, I, yeah, we are talking about, yeah, so go ahead, yeah.
On it, so, um, so TSAC agreed that, um, they needed to begin to talk to the city of Boston on a regular basis generally to help with that, but additionally, they're going to focus on, uh, establishing a protocol for when the state puts up the barrier over at Short Beach.
Okay.
Whether the state police or Boston police need to be notified and man the intersection up at Orient Heights so that they can override the lights-
Okay.
-and get through people, uh, people through because of the public safety, uh, concern of that, so-
Okay.
-that's where that discussion sort of, uh, left off there.
Okay. All right.
We do have representation, I've spoken with somebody from Mastard that will be attending one of our next couple of meetings, and, uh, to talk to us more about a pilot project that they're looking at, um, that goes basically from the old casket company towards Beach Mart, um, but then I've also heard rumblings of a city of Boston potential issue that could affect us dramatically from, uh, Wood Island to Orient Heights, so we got to get some more clarification on that, um, but we will have somebody in here from Mastard to give us, um, an update on some of the stuff within the next, uh, one or two meetings.
Thank you.
Counselor Iello.
Uh, just following up on that, uh, just wanted to make sure that the, the entire council, but Tony, I think you, you and I exchanged some emails on this, uh, the governor signed a, um, a new bill, uh, referred to as an act to reduce traffic fatalities, uh, that is now law, and, um, it does reinforce the, the whole issue of having more crosswalks and forcing crosswalks, making sure that, uh, pedestrians, bikes, et cetera, are able to, um, travel safely, et cetera. The key to me is that it requires and directs the Mass Department of Transportation to erect and maintain signage along public ways to notify more, uh, uh, motor vehicles of what the laws are. So, um, that's one of the things maybe we see to, to Mastard, rather than that burden falling on us, the legislature has put that burden on Mass DOT, and so maybe we can get more signage in the town around, um, what the rules of the road are.
Yep. Thank you for that.
And, uh, just two things, thank you on the parking lot back there, appreciate the, digging through that report, found something from nineteen ninety-eight, which is always good, and, um, and then the last thing, the center signs, um, this is with my precinct orientation.
Yep.
Uh, some of the vendors are wondering when the signs, if I can come up, do we know if the signs have been audited or where we are in the process?
Some of them we have already from the, you know, the original construction plan, we may have a few more, so I'll check with Steve on that and get back to you with an answer.
Yeah, this, uh, I've told them it can't be done until the weather clears, but I wanted to make sure we have the signs.
Yeah, I think, we've got a lot of them, but I think there's some more specific ones after the changes that we want to make sure we have as well.
That'd be great, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? And, uh, Vice President.
Just, uh, Counselor Iello sort of already answered the question, but one thing that I was going to bring up was, um, the storm and the closure of Short Beach, I don't think we've had a meeting since then.
Right.
Um, obviously this created a pain point for a lot of folks in town, um, you know, I mean, I don't know, was there any, any sort of like things that we can change for next time? I mean, this will happen again, we are a coastal community, and I like the idea of, you know, alerting Boston so that folks can flow out a little bit faster that way, um, you know, I found out, I, I subscribe to the town emails, and I think, you know, you know, and that's how I found out about it, but a lot of people were, you know, on the road already and couldn't get it out, couldn't get out, so, um, I don't know, any, anything just on that, like lessons learned, things we can do better, different next time, um, like I said, I like that idea, that, that sounds like one of the-
The state police and the Boston police, they want to try to figure out how to get that down.
We talked to both chiefs about that, I mean, the chief and I met the day before in the morning, where I was in town as well, you know, we, we watched the tides, we were watching the winds, we were trying to anticipate the flooding, uh, we had the fire department ready to go to, for the houses that got flooded out, um, as far as the, yeah, but we have to work on the notification, I think we need to know sooner, um, I'm not sure if they knew sooner, I think they were just, I think it was a quick trigger, because it turned in a hurry, so, yeah.
Is that us, or is that, who, who makes the call to shut the?
Uh, DCR makes the call.
Yeah, DCR made the call, it wasn't us, yeah.
They've got a link to the state police to help at that site-
Yep.
-but they don't have a link to the city of Boston to determine whether they, uh, the city of Boston police, uh, should override the intersection at the heights because it's their only way out, so that's, I think, what we're trying to force that issue and, um, see how that goes, and I know you got a intergovernmental committee, so that might be an appropriate place to get a whole bunch of these things, so that should be solved.
Just on that, was anyone displaced from the flag?
No, uh, he wasn't spotted.
No one was displaced, but it, and something I was going to talk about too, is that, you know, as much as where the traffic was horrendous, we, we still had incidents in, in town where we, you know, hopefully can address something back on Morton Street again where there was severe flooding, um, and there was also flooding at Pico, um, but severe flooding at Morton Street where, you know, I, I don't think there was displacements, but there was definitely, you know, the weather got really cold, uh, heats were out, um, it's a problem, and it's been brought up before, and, um, you know, we were in line for, for a project for that, which hasn't come to fruition yet, but it's something that we're going to have to, uh, have serious discussions about.
And related to that, and I get confused about whether it's Mass DOT or city of Boston, but I believe the city of Boston for that stretch of Bennetton Street, um, and there's another problem sort of towards Wood Island, but for that stretch of Bennetton Street, as well as the Revere border of the marsh, uh, both municipalities, city of Boston and city of Revere are adopting a berm mentality to keep the marsh growing there. You think about it as a big pool filling out, the water's going to come into Winterfield, so we've got to either build berms, or we've got to-
Which some people, it's a line of sight thing too with views and stuff like that, but that's exactly what we had discussed, Tony and I had discussed that, and it's something we're going to have to look at.
And that's something on the radar with DEP already, because they, you know, some of the things we do, um, on one of the beaches where we, you know, pile up the snow in the winter time and then take it away, the dirt, the sand rather, to create that berm, you know, there's, there's a better way to do that with the berm, you talk about a staggered berm system with vegetation and things like that, so.
Yeah, but they want to do permanent berm all the way across to basically protect Suffolk Downs from the marsh, and it's pushing water to us.
Right. Is that already through DEP, or do we know?
Uh, no, they've started the process.
Yeah, I was going to say, because, yeah, we do something similar and then they push back on us, so now we got to come up with- We do something similar and then they push back on us, so now we gotta come up with an alternative. Yeah, so I think they're gonna get similar pushback, but, you know, we'll see what happens.
Yeah, we gotta get into that conversation.
Yeah, we'll let it out.
All right. And I do, I thank you for addressing the, the town trucks that are still in that lot and, and the fire truck down at the, uh, landing. And, and good to see that they should be moving on that relatively soon. I do also have, um, you were talking about some issues, um, earlier in your report in, in regards to Walden Street. There have been some issues that I have, well, that residents have with more line of sight issues and, and not for all part, but especially near major intersections where cars are parking, literally not blocking a driveway, but right on the edge of the driveway. And people just have no line of sight in getting out and trying to get out when they're one or two houses up from a major intersection and cars are coming from a light or whatever. Um, you know, I know, I think it was proposed, I guess, two, three, four years back about having a restriction parking. You know, I know there's ten feet from a, from a intersection, but could there be one five feet from a, from a driveway entrance? And, and I don't think it's pertinent for every driveway in town, but there are definitely areas where, um, especially close to intersections where it's very hard to, to have a line of sight. I mean, if you're on any of the finger streets coming up to Main Street and trying to take a left or a right, and if there's a car parked right on the intersection there, it's, it's just very difficult. And I, I'd like to see this maybe go back to TSAC too, or to talk to Director Callow about that. And that's it.
Steve did say, uh, pardon the interruption, but, uh, Steve did say that, uh, he was getting a, uh, document, I think it was from the Lexington Concord, that was trying to address all these kinds of issues about traffic calming, parking, line of sight, protection of crosswalk, utilization of traffic and stuff. So, uh, he may have it already. This was, this was, um, just before the holiday at the TSAC.
Council Munson, did you have something? No? All right. Uh, Commissioner on Diversity, Inclusion and Community Relations have
Not met. They have a meeting next week.
They have a meeting and we will have an update on it at our next meeting. Uh, Old Business, there are a few motions coming out of Finance. Council Fusillo?
Yes, the first one being, uh, the appropriation of certified free cash. I move that the town council vote to appropriate certified free cash as listed below or take any other action there. Two, uh, free cash and return earnings, uh, certification files attached below. Um, so, once again, um, we'd be to the General Stabilization Fund adding four, uh, four hundred sixty-five thousand, two hundred ninety-four dollars. Uh, we're adding to the Capital Stabilization Fund, uh, three hundred forty-eight thousand, nine hundred seventy dollars. And to the Building Stabilization Fund, we're adding one hundred seventy-five thousand, two hundred seventy-eight dollars, which would leave our ending free cash balance at, uh, four hundred twenty-three thousand, six hundred ninety-two. And that's before the next motion, which is coming, but that's the one we have for now.
All right. And this would bring general stabilization slightly over three million, capital stabilization also over three million, and building stabilization, which is capped at three hundred thousand. There's a motion coming from Finance. Had positive recommendation, does not require a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing that, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council Munson? Council Fusillo?
Yes.
Council Belcher?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Flacott? Council Ayala?
Yes.
Vice President Mujero?
Yes.
President Luteri?
Yes. Council Fusillo?
All right, um, this one is now the, uh, the non-union colas. Um, so I move that the town council vote to transfer twenty-four thousand, two hundred thirty-two dollars and sixty-four cents from the salary reserve account and appropriate thirty thousand, five hundred sixty-seven thousand and thirty-six cents from free cash to various departments' personnel accounts listed below to cover the cost of non-union, uh, cost of living adjustments or take any other action there too. Um, there's a long list of things here. Um, so we're, once again, uh, twenty-four thousand, two hundred thirty-two dollars and sixty-four cents is coming from salary reserve and thirty thousand, five hundred sixty-seven, um, dollars and thirty-six cents is coming from certified free cash, which would leave our certified free cash, uh, amount at three hundred ninety-one thousand, nine hundred twenty-four dollars and sixty-four cents.
Right. This motion is also coming out of Finance where the positive recommendation does not require a second. My only question on this is if you look at the, um, the motion, the thirty thousand, five hundred sixty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents, and then you look at the request amount, which is thirty-one thousand, seven hundred sixty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents. Is there any, it looks like there's twelve hundred dollar difference. I just wanna make sure we could clear up the verbiage before this, if there's a reason why it is a, a change. It's twelve hundred dollars even. I just wanted to note.
Yep, I know why. You have the older pay table. I had asked them to, uh, pull off the, uh, we just hired the veterans agent, so we're not gonna do a bump this year. So the veterans agent salary will get bumped at the FY twenty-four salary, uh, with a two percent colas. So it won't be another two percent now. We just hired the veterans agent, so that's the twelve. You have the older version.
So that number is thirty thousand, five sixty-seven, so the free cash after the motion should be probably three hundred ninety-two thousand, one hundred twenty-four, sixty-four. So just to make sure that those numbers are right.
Yep.
Okay, there's a motion on the table. It has come out with positive recommendation, does not require a second. Any discussion, further discussion? Seeing that, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council Fusillo?
Yes.
Council Munson? Council Bel, Council Belcher?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Ayala?
Yes.
Council Flacott? Vice President Mujero?
Yes.
President Luteri?
Yes. Council Fusillo?
Right, uh, emergency recognition transfer. Uh, I move that the town council vote to transfer five thousand from the town council reserve line to the town manager general office supplies line for employee recognition in fiscal year twenty twenty-three or to take any other action there too. That would take the town council reserve line from forty-seven thousand, one hundred twenty-seven dollars, down five thousand to forty-two thousand, one hundred twenty-seven dollars.
Okay, and this is a historical transfer. It's been done every year over the past sixteen years. Um, any discussion on this motion? It did come out of Finance. Positive recommendation does not require a second. Seeing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Munson.
Mr. Council President, if I could just on that?
Yes.
I know that, um, as far as for the public's knowledge, I mean, obviously, that's the employee appreciation. It's the holiday party employee appreciation event. I also want to point out, a lot of this money, um, goes back to, you know, gift cards given to employees for the local businesses and also local restaurants that, you know, supply the food and stuff. So some of this money goes back to the community as well. Just wanted to point that out.
And thank them again for all they do. Ordinance review committee recommendations, we will keep on. Uh, committee handbook. Council Belcher, any updates?
Uh, that will be in the inboxes of the clerk and the town manager by the end of the week for review and circulation to current, um, committee chairs.
Okay. So now we have new business and we just have a yearly event, a, um, uh, we will take nominations for Council Vice President.
I'd like to nominate, um,
Council Honan?
Thank you. I'd like to nominate, uh, Vice President Stephen Mujero.
Uh, Vice President Mujero's name is in nominations. There was second?
Second.
Second by Councilor DeMarco. Any other nominations? Seeing that, I will close nominations. There was a nomination for Council Vice President Mujero to remain as Council Vice President. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Seeing that, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. Congratulations, once again.
Thank you.
I'd also like to ask for, well, I'd like to, um, suggest, oh, I guess I have to do the first one first. I'd like to suggest a, a, a new standing committee and, and this, um, comes out a lot of hard work from Council Ayala. Um, but before I do that, I have to go ask for a council rule. I'm going to, um, what I'm gonna try to do is combine two of the committees to basically leave an open spot for a new committee. So I looked at the meeting list and everything else and I am, um, asking for a motion to suspend Council Rule Eight to enable the council to combine the economic development and the capital assets committees, um, to make one committee. So I would ask for a motion to suspend Council, uh, Council Rule Eight. It's a motion by Council DeMarco, second. By Council Belcher, any discussion on the motion? Council Ayala?
Uh, question for clarification. So we were planning to have the capital assets meet a number of times over the next number of months uh, to, uh, follow the development of the capital plan.
Yep. They will still meet. It will just
Jointly, as a joint session.
Yep, it's, it's still the capital assets committee and it would be a capital assets slash economic development committee. So they kinda, a lot of them go together. Uh, was it Vice President Mujero?
Question, is it the same membership on both?
No, there's, it's, oh, you know, I looked at that too when I was looking into it. But there'll be a new membership list coming out, but the three members that, three of the four members will maintain on.
Got it.
Yep. So we have I'm sorry, Council Munson?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, the economic development committee won't be dissolved. It will just be
No, no, no. It will be just incorporated into a capital asset committee. It will have a dual role. All right, so, um, any discussion on that? Waiving of the rule, seeing done, I will, once the rule is waived, I will just do that. I don't need permission to do that. And now I would like to, um, create a new committee. Uh, and this committee will be the Town Council Standing Committee and Intergovernmental Strategies. And, uh, the council president shall appoint a panel of three members of the town council. The committee shall strive, uh, to meet with representatives of local congressmen, two state senators, state representatives. Um, state senator, regional agencies, adjacent municipalities may be invited from time to time to come at the discretion of the committee chair appointed by the town council president for those cases where state and federal funding may be allocated across municipality basis. Where certain expertise is available, the primary purpose of this committee shall be to identify federal and or state funding sources that may be available to the town. The committee shall map funding availability for eligibility against, uh, various town needs. The committee shall ensure that a robust needs assessment is prepared by the town manager. We're not trying to step on the toes of the planner or anything else, and they, they doing a great job and also looking for funding for the town. But this just gives the council a little more oof and, you know, Councilor Ayala had come to me with this idea last year. Um, so, um, I, I would again ask for a waiving of the rule of Town Council Rule Eight to create a new committee. So I'd ask for a motion to create a committee and then we could discuss it. Motion by Council Munson, second, by Council of, um, Belcher. Um, so now we can create the committee. Is there any discussion? Uh, I'd like to give Council Ayala an opportunity. And what I will be doing, maybe not tonight, but tomorrow, I will be sending out a list, um, of new committee assignments for this year. And I will say that my intention is to have Council Ayala chair this committee, but, uh, there'll be a list of new, so before you, before you ask if you want to do it, um, but there'll be a list coming out. So in, um, but there'll be a list of committee members coming. Council Belcher will be also on this committee, um, or asked to be. So, um, if Council Ayala would want to give a little brief, um, thought of what he thinks that this committee would ensue.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, yeah, I think that, um, we've been in very unusual times uh, with respect to state and federal dollars being available, um, number one. Number two, I think the town has gotten progressively better, particularly over the last year. I've been watching and sort of the identification and pursuit of, of, uh, capital dollars, et cetera. And we have identified a whole series of needs that seem to relate to what's available in the marketplace. So having a stronger voice with our elected officials, I think, can only help. Um, we could hopefully count on their staff to help us get through the morass of state and federal regulations about how to get access to these grant programs, et cetera. So I think it's a, it's a great move for the town and hopefully it means, uh, more net dollars coming into the town, particularly around key projects perhaps like the fire station, the middle school, uh, water sewer obligations we have, et cetera.
All right, very good. So that will be coming out in the next few days. You will see it in your inboxes. Uh, but thank you for giving us the opportunity to, to create these and consolidate a little bit. We didn't want to keep adding committees because the committee assignments and, you know, we talked about this in the ordinance review, just the amount of work done. There's eight committees, eight standing committees, and you figure three people, that's twenty-four more positions. So, um, we thought consolidation. I thought consolidation was a, a good start to this. All right.
Council President, should we do a roll call vote just for the
The new committee?
For the new committee, yes, sure. For the creation of the new committee, which has been made and seconded.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council Fusillo?
Yes.
Council Munson? Council Belcher?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Flacott? Council Ayala?
Yes.
Vice President Mujero?
Yes.
President Luteri?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, I would also like, I don't see on here, but, um, just to discuss upcoming meetings, the meeting calendar right now.
It's on there, the last one?
Last one.
Okay. See, I'm, I always have the second agenda that I'm always the president. All right, traffic safety, not voting, but, uh, jeez, and they, and they show it, it gives me too. So, um, we're, I'm looking at council meetings. The upcoming meeting today is the third. There's a scheduled meeting on the seventeenth and then February seventh and twenty-first. Uh, I'm gonna ask for a motion to suspend, uh, Council Rule Two A and to go to a meeting schedule, which would be today, obviously. January seventeenth would remain in place. January thirty-first would take the place of February seventh and then have February twenty-first. So not lessening the meetings, we're just adjusting one week of a meeting from February second to January thirty-first. So I'd ask for a motion to waive Council Rule Two-A. Motion by Council Belcher, second, by Council of, uh, Fusillo. Any discussion on the motion? Uh, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Uh, and I'm anticipating an executive session probably at the next council meeting, uh, which would be January seventeenth. We'll get information out and we would probably, I would assume, start the executive session at six and then go into the council meeting at seven. Other comments? John, you've been sitting there so patiently all night.
Yes, I hope I can still talk. I, John Margate, Precinct Four. I'm gonna bring up a subject that's got four letters. Shh, no. The DPW has an obligation to the town to, to pave the streets and they are taking, taking care of a lot of, oh, oh, well, how much am I talking? The DPW has a responsibility to the town to clear the streets as a matter of public safety. The town also has an obligation to, to clear the schools for the children. And all the businesses have their obligations for the safety of, of their, their customers to enter and exit their store on a safe, uh, uh, in a safe manner, excuse me. My lessons for public speaking, I, I really need my money back. Um, but when it comes to the shoveling of sidewalks, it's almost at times nonexistent. There is no, no enforcement for someone, uh, for a landlord or a, a, a person who owns a house to shovel their sidewalk. It, it should be done. I'm speaking as a pedestrian, not as anything else. I like to walk the town. And when it snows, it's much easier to walk on the sidewalk and safer than it is to walk in the street. I, I just wanted to bring that up and I hope this can get around to have people do their due diligence in shovel. Uh, also, also get into shovel, to shovel up there, their crosswalks if they have one. It can, and most important, the fire hydrants, so in case there's an emergency, the fire department connects us there, that safely and, and, and uh, thank you and I'm gonna take a breath now.
Thank you very much, John, for your comments and they're well taken and, and I think it would be behoove us all to, to make sure. We, we should get a little statement out there just to show the responsibilities and we should be enforcing this. And we've had a lot of, you know, high school kid volunteers that go out and shovel. There are certain, um, you know, situations where the residents just unable to do so and it, it's always nice to have a group of volunteers that will help out and neighbors do such. But it is the responsibility of the homeowners to make sure that they have a clear path in front of their house and especially to help with the fire hydrants. But I think that's a great thing to just get out, um, comment sets memo.
Get the public information out.
To get out. Yes, before and, and be proactive for once instead of reactive.
Before the snow falls.
And I'll go around, is that And I'll go, is that to John or just in general?
John, sure, topic, but over to the town manager, doesn't get lost in translation. So I worked with Terry last winter to also try to identify and I, either he has a list or one of us probably has a list. There's also what we ended up calling sort of zombie sidewalks and that was sidewalks that sit adjacent to, like the town landing, sit adjacent to the Lewis Lake Park, et cetera, which there's no private enterprise that's outside of it. Technically, that should fall under the DPW's domain and I understand they do the streets and side, crosswalks first and all that stuff. But I can get you that list, I'll look it up. If you don't have it, leftover from Terry, we did a little inventory last year, those places that need shoveling, those sidewalks.
Okay. I'm assuming, and I should check with Steve, but I'm assuming we have a sidewalk machine or?
We do have, we have a couple because we also look at, like Ingleside Park, for kids getting from one side of Ingleside Park to the other to get to the school. You know, we usually try to do one, but we have a couple bobcaps or different attachments.
There's snowplow, sidewalk attachment, okay.
And just go to.
Just the snow topic.
Okay, sure.
Just while we're talking about it, while we're identifying certain areas, the pathway in between the golf course and the high school, that's, you know, used by pedestrians from Veterans Road, the beach region across to, you know, the rest of the town, which includes the marketplace. And in times of snow when you can't drive, you get to walk there. I think that's technically under the school's jurisdiction, but just historically, that's something that I've received comments on from my constituents saying that, you know, this thing is impounded and I think it was part of the promise that we made that this was going to be maintained. It was once, they called it the ditch. And now it's a well-lit pedestrian walkway, so we want to, you know, keep up with what we pay for, so.
All right, and publicly, we do have the MMA conference coming, I think it's February twenty, January twentieth, twenty-first.
Yeah, Friday, Saturday, yeah.
And I'll go around the room, well, I'll start with Council Munson since I forgot him a few times tonight. Council Munson, do you have anything?
Just a few, thank you for asking. I actually was trying to slide into the town manager before happening, I just don't know what happened psychologically, but one of the comments I was going to make on the PSA part of it is coyotes. I wanted to just note that there's been a lot of sightings, there's been, obviously there've been coyotes here for years and have, and ever, always has been, but I think they're becoming more prevalent. I just wanted to put it out there that basically any dog, whether it goes out at night after dark, is kind of at risk now. I mean, they're out sometimes during broad daylight, but I just wanted to just say, be prepared to make loud noise and, you know, scare them away, but yeah, they're, they're out there and they're consistently out there, it's not once in a while. So I don't know where the town stands on their position with the coyotes, I don't know how it would say as aggressive stance being that the coyotes have been aggressive there, but I just wanted to make that announcement. I also wanted to do a little shout out to the fire department for being there for some of the residents and helping them pump out the water out of people's basements and I just, hopefully we can get ahead of some of this flooding and we can, you know, maybe do some long-term strategy on berms, et cetera, so those were the two announcements, thank you.
Thank you. Council Honan?
No.
Council Fucillo?
Hope everyone had a great holiday season and here's to a great year.
Council, Council Belcher?
No.
Council DeMarco?
I just wanted to say how great the EB Newton looks now with the new clock tower and I wanted to give a huge shout out to former counselor, Richard Farino. Without him, that never would have happened, so.
Council Ayello?
I've been from.
Vice President Ruggiero?
Just thank you to my colleagues for the vote of confidence tonight, look forward to another great year.
And I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Council Belcher, second by Council Fucillo. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it, meeting adjourned, thank you.